Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order at 7:01 for the planning board. The first thing on the agenda is the continued public hearing of the definitive subdivision entitled Winsong Acres, proposed five lot subdivision located off of Jason Drive, map 125 lots 19, 19-1 through 19-7. Christine?
So the applicant is working with DPW responding to comments and they've requested a continuance until June 1st.
I need a motion to continue it till June 1st.
So moved, second.
I'll second that.
I would second it, all in favor. Kevin Mellow?
Aye.
Steven Taylor?
Yes.
John Souza?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Loriann Miller, yes, the motion carries unanimously. The second thing on the agenda is the definitive subdivision plan entitled Penelope Lane, and I need to be cruised from this. So Kevin, I need you to take over, please.
Okay, thanks for the heads up.
Well, the applicant is on for this evening. They're going to introduce their LSP and they're going to talk about some of the contamination issues or potential contamination issues on the site.
Okay.
Good evening, Jamie Bissonette from Xena Consulting Engineers for the record. I'm actually not seeing.
Do I get my picture up here?
I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not seeing Rick Mandel from Sage Environmental. Is he in the waiting room?
No, I don't see that name at all, to be honest with you.
Hey Jamie, it's Rick Mandel. I'm under the, my wife's.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Perfect, alright.
It's Colburn.
Before we get started, I just wanted to say that the planning board alternate Kathleen just.
Del Sorto.
Del Sorto will be sitting in.
Yes.
And so on all of this going forward. And then just so everybody knows, the applicant is awaiting comments from DPW, or we're awaiting comments from DPW for them to respond to. Okay, now go ahead.
Excellent. So at our last meeting, we went through the, we reviewed the project and, and spoke about proceeding forward and some issues that wanted to be addressed, including review by DPW, et cetera. We're still waiting from the comments, like Christine said, from DPW, but the owners of the property have reached out to Rick Mandel of Sage Environmental to look at the environmental component. And I'd like to turn it over to Rick to try to just go over briefly the environmental part of things so you can see that we're moving forward with this project. Anybody else?
Sure, thanks Jamie. Hello all. My name's Rick Mandel and I own a company called Sage Environmental. And I've spent the last couple of weeks with Ron Olivera as well as the Zala family, specifically Bob, in an effort to try to come up to speed on the outstanding environmental issue that was brought to Bob's attention. Sage has been retained by the Zala family to assist in responding to a Mass DEP notice of responsibility that was issued to the owners sometime in February. Apparently, they were unaware of the outstanding notice of responsibility. And it's, it's actually not surprising since over the past couple of months, it seems like DEP is going back through a lot of their old files in, in looking at sites that have been open for a long time but have yet to be properly closed through the Massachusetts contingency plan process. So Mr. Zala, Bob, who I have been assisting, has again recently retained Sage and my LSPs who assist with responding to the DEP notice of responsibility. We, because I was just engaged, we requested and received an extension of the response deadline to November 1st of this year. To go out, essentially, the work that needs to be done is to evaluate whether or not there are any remaining environmental impacts that had been previously discovered back in the 1990s and probably even before. So we're engaged in that effort. And over the coming weeks, we will be working with Kate Carvalho at Mass DEP, who is the project manager for this particular site. And she's been very kind to offer her assistance with our efforts. Happy to answer any questions that I can with the caveat that I don't have a lot of information yet, other than I've reviewed the DEP historic file on this site and am just beginning the process of synthesizing that information. We will be developing a proposed sampling plan that I will review with Kate Carvalho from DEP and then hopefully executing that within the coming weeks.
Okay, any questions from the planning board?
Yes, I have a question. Can you just refresh our memories as to exactly what type of contamination may or may not be there? What's the matter of concern? What was supposedly there or not?
Sure. And again, you know, please, please forgive me if I don't know the intimate details on it. But my understanding is, is there were superficial materials, coal ash, coal tar, we call it generally in our universe, we call it urban fill, crushed asphalt, concrete. Apparently, there were, there were areas along the UMass Dartmouth sewer extension line that were noted when they were doing that extension work. And as a result of the discovery of it then, they traced it northward up onto a smaller portion of the Zala line of property towards the pond. So back in the 90s, it looks like they did a limited superficial excavation of visible material. Again, I call it urban fill. And the DEP administratively ended their involvement with it at that time and then have subsequently required the Zalas to close that out. And what that closeout means is go back to those areas, essentially test pit them, see if there are any other of these materials out there or not, and do that work within the regulatory process, as I think you probably all know, the Massachusetts contingency plan. The Mass Contingency Plan, it's a privatized program and we will use one of my licensed site professionals' LSPs. He'll ultimately be the one that, that signs off on any of the documentation that needs to get uploaded to DEP.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Kevin, yeah, I got some questions, but this is a public hearing and I'd like to hear if there's any comments from the public first.
Okay, any public for or against? Anyone from the public? Okay, none being heard. John?
Wait a minute, we do have a couple of people online and I can't, I'm not sure exactly who they are. So we have a Christopher Shea, a Robert, Robert Monigan, and Michael Lopes. I'm not sure if they're for another article or not. They're all muted.
Okay, but I'm assuming they can hear me. So if they're not.
So I just want to make sure us, we don't go too fast, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't see any comments.
Oh, once, going twice, sold. John Souza, you're up.
So I'm a bit concerned about the comments we got from the Board of Health. We just heard that the property consisted of urban fill, asphalt, and alike, I think is what I heard. And I read the Board of Health memo to the planning board. And the, the DEP has determined that the property has been impacted by the release of cyanide, hydrocarbons, residual coal gasification, coal gasification related material. Now, I'm no scientist or engineer, but that certainly sounds a lot more than urban fill and asphalt. So I'm a bit concerned about what's, what's happened to this property, how much cleanup has been done, what's going to be done in the future. And having seen all this, and we only saw a set of plans at the first meeting, I don't have a set of plans in front of me this evening. This is an OSID with the applicant looking to release 50% of land for open space to the town or some entity. And they've chosen the rear portion of the property. And I believe that's where we've got these, we've got this issue. I'm just putting the engineer and the applicant on notice that the planning board dictates through the OSID process what property is best suited for open space. Me personally, I'm only one planning board member, have no interest in acquiring any type of open space for the town or another entity that has got some of these problems that I'm reading about from the Board of Health. So I wish you luck on your cleanup, but I hope we get some better news from Mass DEP and the Board of Health in the future.
Okay, anybody else on the board?
Yes, Kathy Del Sorto. You were looking for an extension all the way through November 1st. What would that extension include? Would that extent of period, extensive period of time include a cleanup? Is that why you're going that far out?
So again, I was, the, the notice of responsibility that was issued to Mr. Zala was issued sometime in February. I think it was the latter part of February. And then when I had an opportunity to look at the back file for this, for the work that had been done previously, it was fairly extensive. There was quite a bit of work that had been done here previously. And for myself and my LSP to meet the May 1st deadline that was originally specified in the February notice, that just wasn't going to be possible in that kind of a limited timeframe. So I advised Mr. Zala of that. And I reached out to Mass DEP Southeast Region. And I asked, I said, listen, they'd like to engage us, but I'm going to need time to come up to speed on the historic information, again, which is significant, and then put together a sampling plan and execute that sampling plan, which all takes time. Now, as I sit here tonight, I can't tell you that we're going to be in and out of this process by November 1st. But I think what I can tell you is that we're going to have a significant amount of the required assessment and laboratory testing work to be able to be in a substantive position to respond to the DEP request. Am I going to need all six months? Maybe? It really, it really is going to depend on what we see in the field out here. When you, you know, I walked the site a couple of weeks back with this historic information. And when, when you walk out there, you would never know that there was anything out here. So the process that I need to follow is do some, I'm going to do some backhoe test fitting, open up the ground, get a look at the areas where DEP had done, you know, a fairly significant superficial removal effort. And again, the intent of what DEP is requiring of the Zalas is, they're asking a question essentially, is there anything more or not? And do the appropriate amount of testing to answer that question. So we can do a lot of work in the next six months. Might it be that there's nothing left? Maybe? I can't tell you with, with the limited information I have now. We're going to learn a lot over the coming, coming weeks and months.
Are there test borings at the location now that anyone's done?
I have not done anything yet. The, my understanding is the work that was done out here was done out here in the 1990s, you know, late 80s, early 90s. What I can tell you is that they removed a bunch of material that had been supposedly dumped on the surface of, of some of the soils out here. And four groundwater monitoring wells were installed as part of that work. And no contaminated groundwater was identified at the time that they had done that work.
Okay, that's important. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else?
Kevin, yes, one more follow-up question. So at our first public hearing, we heard comments from Anna Butter. And I believe she stated she had lived there her entire life or most of her life, and had a somewhat familiarity with the, with site and indicated to us, and this was the first I heard, indicated to us, that she recalls of some dumping on that site. And she mentioned the, a utility company. So I would ask that the applicant, the Zalas, and Mr. Colburn, is it, reach out to this Butter and specifically inquire on what historical data or memory does she have and where, and that we investigate those areas.
That's good to know. Thank you, John.
I don't recall the woman's name, but she indicated she was at a Butter. That is part of the public records. So Christine should be able to get you that information on who she was.
It was Brito. Her name was Brito.
Brito, Mrs. Brito. I just didn't drop that down.
And yeah, that, that is correct. The Britos, all the Britos have been out there for decades. So that family, I would imagine, has got some local history there.
That's great. That's valuable information. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on the board? Okay, no one else on the board? Go ahead, Steve.
I, with respect to what John just said, and for all the reasons that several of you have just recited, I would like to move that because the planning board has an enormous amount of important business relative to future planning going forward, I'd like to move that this project not be brought back to us by Christine until we've heard everything there is to hear from the DEP's final review of whatever environmental work consulting agencies do in the meantime. When we have a really clear definitive set of answers as to what's all cleaned up or what's not all cleaned up, then it would be appropriate to bring it back. But I don't think we should bring this back for interim meetings until we're certain that all this research into the environmental past has been done and concluded and signed off on by the experts. So that's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second up a discussion.
Okay, open for discussion.
How long do we have? Have they signed a continuance of this process?
They have not requested a continuance. They had asked to come forward tonight. 135 days puts us at the beginning of July from when it was signed. Again, they are working with DPW to get comments. I have also been working with DPW on that. The letter was dated, the DEP letter was dated February 19th of this year, and there was the, the May 1st original deadline. So the November 1st put you at six months. We also had comments, in addition from the comments received from the Board of Health, we had a comment from Mike O'Reilly, the environmental enforcement officer, referencing the same, the same DEP investigation. He had said that the Conservation Commission would not be interested in, in receiving the, the open space. But the open space under the OSRD, the way it's set up now, can be put in a homeowners association. I also had received a phone call from Dexter Mead of DNRT, and they would not be interested in it as well. But again, it could be put if, if those two organizations don't want it and there isn't a conservation restriction, we can put it into a homeowners association going forward.
Yeah, yes, if the planning board so moves, I'm interested in even putting it into a homeowners association. A piece of property that typically we grant public access to is under this cloud of.
Can I chime in at some point before the board makes its decision on Ron Olivera? I'm the one that's purchasing the property.
Yeah, well, the planning board is not going to make a decision tonight. You can speak, but obviously, the planning board needs to wait regardless on DPW's comments at this point.
I'd be interested in hearing what Ron has to say. Go ahead, Ron.
So I'm engaged in this property, not just for future development or investment. I'm also planning on living there and building a home, two homes, one for myself and one for my daughter. So it's not like I have an interest in just, you know, dumping it and, you know, the problems on the town's lap. There's been over $400,000 of cleanup at this property. But they want, they want the job closed out by 2020 standards. I wouldn't expect the town to take contaminated land and, you know, make it the town's problem. They've already done over $400,000 worth of cleanup. They just want it closed out by 2020 standards. And we're willing to do the work. What we don't know is, if you're not going to approve four lots there, then I don't want to stick around for the ride. I'm bringing, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to the table and the Zalas are willing to take a piece of that to clean this up. And it'll be clean and done forever. What we don't know after all these meetings is, is the town eventually going to approve four lots, subject to all being clean, provided with LSP reports, which the Board of Health requires prior to us building any home. Any site that's had, that's had any type of contamination, we're going to provide a report from an LSP within two years of gaining a building permit. So my understanding is there's other protective things that are put in place down the road. But myself upfront, I need to know, should I stay engaged with this? Is the planning board going to allow four lots there? We've had meetings with DPW. There's nothing drastic that I feel is going to change there. I know Tim's bogged down with meetings and inspections and they're in and out of the office due to COVID. And, you know, and I asked him, I said, are there going to be any major changes? Do you have any major opposition? And I'm not holding it to, to anything. It's just a conversation that we had. And he's not opposing it. So my question is, is the, is the planning board okay with a potential four lot subdivision if it's all clean? And I'll stick along for the ride and I'll work with Sage and the Zalas and we'll get it cleaned up because it's going to take, it could take a little bit of money, could take a little bit more. But we're all engaged in the process to get it all done properly. And so there's no contaminated land back there. I want to live there. I want to, you know, bring my family there. And, you know, it's not just, hey, I'm going to flip the property and build houses and dump them. I have a vested interest because I'm going to live there. So we're trying to dot the i's and cross the t's. I brought in some of the best guys in the business to make sure it's all clean. And we're going back over 40 years of history, back to the 1970s where they didn't close things up by standards. But we're doing it. But there has been a substantial amount of work. They did do, I don't know how many test pits they did back in the 80s, probably a dozen test pits. They didn't find any groundwater contamination. We all believe that. Somebody backed in there with a triaxle and dumped some, some stuff that, a street that they were repairing or redoing. And it was all on the surface and it was cleaned up. When it was for UMass Dartmouth, they didn't stop that project. They allowed, when it was for the college's benefit, they allowed the guys to get in there and clean it right up and get in and out of there. And it didn't hold up that process. I'm trying to build my home there. We're actually going to further extend above what's been done. And I just need to know, should I stay along for the ride if we get it all cleaned up properly and signed off on? Is the town going to be okay with a four lot subdivision though?
Mr. Olivera, speaking for myself, I'm only one of five planning board members. I don't, you know, we're still not done with the process. But I wouldn't have a problem approving four lots here if it's cleaned up. I just heard you say, you know, you plan on cleaning it up 100%. Seems to be a tall order based on what I'm seeing from DEP and the Board of Health, but I could be wrong. I wish you luck. But, you know, and as you mentioned, $400,000 has been spent on this property. And to be quite honest, that's a drop in the bucket for many sites like this. So good luck. If you can achieve 100% cleanup and 100% sign up from the DEP, Board of Health and Conservation, I, I would love to further investigate this four lot subdivision for you. Again, I'm only speaking for myself.
And I would just like to interject that this sounds very much like the urban fill that's been discussed over and over again with the Bliss Corner area. It's the same type of waste that's being found and, and through the Department of Environmental Protection. Good luck, because nothing has moved in the direction of supporting the community in that venue. So I hope you have more support with the DEP than the Bliss Corner project has had.
Kevin, can I add, can I add something to Mr. Olivera's thing? We did have a reviewers' meeting on April 29th. There were no major objections at that time. Everybody was on a Zoom meeting. So we did have the fire chiefs, you know, they had expressed some concern about the location of the hydrant, that type of thing. There were, you know, some general DPW comments. You know, the biggest comment that came forward again was just that there was contamination and that, you know, maybe the, the land would not be acquired by the town, but there would be other ways to handle that going forward. So the town, the, the town department heads have looked at it. And they are reviewing it. They have given comments. I've given any comments that I've received so far to the, the engineer in this particular case. And I have been informed by DPW that they are in the process of reviewing it. They have no concerns with the, I mean, they, they have concerns with the, not with doing some type of development there. They just want to make sure that it, you know, that there's the drainage and those types of issues are accurately reflected in this particular case. I would just mention to the, to the engineer, Larry, I would just, I would mute you until you, until it's your turn to speak, because every time you take a drink, we hear it of your water. Just mute your.
Fine.
Okay?
Do you want me to mute it?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Yeah, and the difference between us and the folks on Bliss Corner, Bliss Corner's a huge problem, and I know that they're dealing with it, is we're handling it and paying for it privately. We're not looking for, well, right now, you know, hopefully, we don't find anything at a glance. It looks like something we want to keep moving forward with. Bliss Corner, I, my understanding that people that are involved in that area, they're looking for a state, a federal bailout. We're handling this privately and paying for it, you know, out of pocket basically to get us to where we need to be. So that could be the difference. And we're trying to deal with it sooner than later. Like I said, I just needed a little light at the end of the tunnel to make sure there's no major objections to it. And we'll work on the cleanup. And once we have the documentation, we can present it back. I just want to make sure there's no major objections versus getting four lots there. It's a beautiful parcel. It's 90 acres. We want to keep it preserved. And I think it would be a great asset for the town. Now, I would, you know, if there's another way to go about it, we can keep it in a homeowners association. But again, I'm But again, I'm staying along this venture, looking for 100% cleanup and sign off. And we brought in the right professionals to do it and we put in the time. That was the only thing we needed to kind of get a, shed a little light.
Okay. Anyone else on the board want to?
Kevin, may I ask a question?
Sure, Steve.
I think I want to repeat my earlier motion, but before I do, I just want to know if we refused four lots, is this property subdividable or not? Or could it be built, could one house be built on it just the way it is? Is it, is there anything that can be done by right or is it a matter of we, it needs to get cleaned up before we even know whether we can build one, two, three or four?
I'll defer that question to Rick, if you don't mind. Rick, is that, my understanding is this is non-developable even for one lot at this time. Is that correct?
That would probably be a question for Jamie. Jamie is a.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Jamie.
So you're saying from a zoning standpoint, is it a buildable lot as is? I believe the answer would be no. But again, we haven't looked at it as a singular buildable lot or two lots. When, when we looked at it, Ron and I sat down, we went over a couple of schematics and and we felt that four lots are what laid out appropriately for the site. I would need more time to look at it to see if, if one or two lots could be taken out of it by right.
What, what?
With the,
What is?
With the current DEP on it, that the, I don't want to say the freeze or whatever, the cleanup demand, we cannot issue a building permit at this time.
Understood. I'm not.
That's what I want to, I am correct in understanding that.
Well, I, I don't know exactly where the, where the areas of interest are. That's what Rick Mandel is handling with Sage. They're looking into that. And he's gonna tell us exactly where those areas are or were.
Okay. Margaret, you have?
What, what is the frontage on this? I don't have my plot plan in front of me. What is the frontage on this parcel?
Bear with me. It's it is 61 and change. 61.41 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Ron, you had something else?
Yeah, it's a Board of Health requirement. Any property that's had any type of contamination, you need to provide them with a report from an LSP showing that it's been cleaned up before they'll issue a building permit, before the Board of Health will sign off. So, so we have to cross that road. We have to show them that it's been cleaned up within two years of building of, of applying for a building permit. But we wouldn't be able to get one either way without it. We wouldn't be able to build on any of the, on any of the lots without that report. If you approved it today, well, I know you're not. I'm just saying if you approved it today, I wouldn't be able to get any building permits until we provided those reports.
Well, you know, we, we've already heard John say that he's, he would go along with the four lot subdivision after it's 100% clean as a consensus in theory. I certainly feel the same way. You know, it's in the town's best interest to get this cleared up. Four lots is certainly much better than, you know, 90 acres at, you know, a 41B in there or 40, you know, they could possibly put what? 360 houses on that, on that same piece of property? But.
A lot of it is wetlands.
I'm being a little facetious. You know, four lots is in the best interest of the town if, once it's cleaned up. So I, I would like to hear the other boards because I understand, you know, I don't want you chasing your tail. If this is not gonna happen, I understand where you're coming from. And, you know, if you walk away from this project, the sellers just sit on it. What will happen eventually? It will never get cleaned up. I think it's in the best interest of the town to clean the property and the price of four lots is a minimal price, in my opinion. So if the other board members could chime in and give their consensus.
Kevin, I can chime in. I would agree with everything you just said and I would tell Mr. Olivera that four lots is certainly better than any number larger than four. And I would support him if it's all cleaned up for four on the 90 acres, particularly if part of the proposal is nailed down tight, that it will never be further subdivided and I'd like to know about that. But in principle, I support what you just said. I want to add though, that for the sake of the planning board's process and all the many other things that we are involved in, I don't think it matters what DPW or anybody else thinks. We're about to have a joint meeting with DPW about why they're so overworked and can't respond to so many of our processes. I'm just asking that this not come back until the cleanup part is nailed down. But with that caveat, I would tell Mr. Olivera that I would vote in favor of four lots if it's all cleaned up. I just don't want to spend a lot of time in between talking about it until we get the cleanup part nailed down.
Fair enough. Anyone else?
The letter from, from the Board of Health does say that the Board of Health voted unanimously to recommend that the planning board deny the, deny the subdivision. That was the letter that you received that was April 5th deadline. It's at the bottom of the letter for all of your information. I don't think, whatever you decide to do this evening, if you decide to, to continue it, I, I wouldn't just continue it until the cleanup is complete. I think, I think you need to keep the lines of communication open. You need to, if you do move forward, you need to allow the applicant to get the comments from DPW and start, and start moving forward. I don't, I don't think it's in the best interest of any project to stop it and wait, wait for DEP. There are too many unanswered questions right now. And I, I mean, I, I think we should just be getting the feedback as the applicant and, and their, his representatives get the feedback from DEP or from anybody else.
But Christine, with all due respect, does it make any sense for DPW to spend any time on this until DEP gets it nailed down?
Yes, we received an application and we have to give some type of a, we have to give a response to it. So yes, they, they have.
Our response can be no until it's sorted out, but we, knowing that it could be yes in the future. But we have these very valuable meeting times and we need to do work on the future planning for the town and these continued, spending a half an hour per meeting on a continuance doesn't make sense.
That's the board to decide.
Christine, you, you just stated the Board of Health voted not to approve this. But there was some value, there was some valuable information. It says, unless the applicant demonstrates the property has attained a level of no significant risk.
I'm sorry, the, the back page of it. I should read the thing exactly the way it is into the record.
Yes, so they, they are agreeing with what my opinion is and what John's opinion is, is that they're good with this if it attains the cleanup statute. As far as not listening to the applicant, that's our job. You know, we have to listen to the applicant. And if we have to spend a half an hour or an hour, that's our job. That's what we signed up for as elected officials. You know, I, I would rather hear a little bit here and there than have to spend five hours on it all at once. So with that little bit, I, I do disagree with, with Steve. We signed up for a job and we're here to do it.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I'm fine, Mr. Olivera, if, with a full lot subdivision. But what I would ask for as, as you do this cleanup and as letters are written, like the one that your, Mr., the gentleman from Sage has sent, I would wonder if we would like to have copies sent to us. I'd like to be CC'd on the planning board so we know what's going on as you go on. Okay?
Good idea.
Yeah, we won't, we won't take up a lot of, any of the board's time until something significant has happened. I would like Mr. Barber to.
But I still would like, I would like copies of everything that goes between you and DEP. Okay? Through your representatives. Just CC the planning board. CC Christine, please.
If, if I could, folks. So any communication in writing that we have with DEP, we will be uploading onto what's known as EDEP. So you'll be able to see those documents real time as we upload them to the department. I can, I can let folks know when those, when those uploads happen as well and it's, it's visible to everyone.
So is it a problem to CC us?
I don't think so, no.
Then we, I would prefer to have it done that way because we all get busy and we might not look at it. Okay?
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, I want it, I, I want, that's what I want. Okay, my, the rest of the people agree that's good. I think that would be very helpful to all of us as we follow it along.
Can do.
Thanks.
Mr. Mello, one more comment from me.
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Olivera, you know, when I stated previously that I want to see the property cleaned up and you're showing a willingness to do that, please keep in mind when I said that I mean the entire property. So I don't want to end up with a proposed subdivision that shows, I, I believe you were showing originally four building envelopes, an open space parcel. You may have shown a drainage parcel also for, I can't remember. So either four or five parcels. I, I don't want to approve anything if any one of those parcels are in question by the DEP or the Board of Health. It's not just the building envelopes. I think it's important that whole site is cleaned up if you're asking for a full lot subdivision. So just be aware.
No, I understood it and I don't want to buy it and I don't want to bring my family there, my future family there unless it's completely cleaned up.
Right, okay.
And I wouldn't do, even if I was selling it off, I'm a realtor, I'm an investor, I'm a developer. I gotta hang my hat on it. I wouldn't want to sell unless it was done 100% otherwise.
Thank you.
And if I could, it, it's, it's our responsibility as environmental professionals and LSPs, licensed site professionals, that we are to assess these specific lots. So we're gonna be looking, even though the reported material that had been discharged here is in a very small portion of the overall larger parcels, we're required to look at everything within the four corners of the lots, all 90 acres. So we'll, we'll be looking at those as part of this effort.
Good.
Very good. Kathleen, did you have any?
No, it sounds like we have a good plan going forward. Yeah.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to not listen to this. It's been seconded until it's 100%. We need to take a roll call vote on that motion that's on the floor or ask that it be amended.
I'd like to see Mr. Taylor amend that motion. I'm not interested in table on this until it's 100%. I don't mind receiving updates or from the, from the applicant. I think as Steve, as Kevin mentioned, that's what the board is here for. So I will vote this down if Mr. Taylor, me personally, if Mr. Taylor's not interested in amending his motion.
I, I would be happy to amend the motion that we receive updates, but that doesn't mean we need to spend meeting time discussing it till we get the DEP's answer. I agree with what Margaret Sweet was asking for, that we be copied on what transpires, but I don't think we need to discuss an up or down yes or no approval process or ask other agencies like DPW what they would do with positioning a fire hydrant until we know that it's been cleaned up. But I'm happy to receive the information in the meantime.
I'd much rather, Steve, I, you know, me personally, I've made it very clear to Mr. Olivera that he's not going to receive support from me unless this site's 100%. And I'm only one member.
Right, I agree with you.
So I believe Mr. Olivera, if he wants to come back to this board in four months with a 50% cleanup, that's his prerogative. He's already been put on notice. He's not gonna get my vote. If he wants to do that, that's fine. I would imagine he's not gonna get other votes. But I believe in allowing people access to government officials. And if that means sacrifice and long-range planning and so forth, so be it. But people pay taxes. They have a right to develop. They have a right to the process. We're here to move along that process.
John, in this instance, I will amend my motion to agree with you or you can phrase it the way you like, but I would just like to add that I do not want to sacrifice long-range planning for any reason, but I will go along with what you're proposing tonight.
And I'll second the motion then. Amen. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I mean to interrupt the board. If Mr. Barber, it seems like he's pretty close to wrapping this up. May, and you could talk to him. He's close, like, because we've spent a considerable amount of time limit and it'd be nice to have, you know, a pretty completed plan on his part and then we won't come back till all the cleanup's done. We'll update the board as things are done without a meeting. We'll send it, we'll send it to the planner so she can update you or CC everybody on the emails as things get done without having an official meeting. We've spent a considerable amount of time, Mr. Barber, and I feel that he's close to wrapping this up. I was just hate to lose the momentum and pull the plug on it. He's close to having it done and there'd be one less piece that we need later on. It's just, if you can, you can. I understand.
So what I would tell you is DP, DPW is, like you said, we've been in contact and we are working on finalizing their comment. As soon as I get the comments, I will send them to their engineer. The process has to move forward in some capacity regardless because I've got that, that written 35 deadline, 35 day deadline that we're working within. So, you know, I do think that you need to move forward. You get the, we'll get the comments to you as soon as we get them.
Okay. I just don't want to just. Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, so where, we have a motion. It's been amended. It's been seconded. That we are going to close the public hearing that we're in.
Oh, no, I.
Public hearing.
Oh, you don't want a public hearing.
Okay, so we will continue it to an indefinite.
Well, the next planning board date is a regularly scheduled meeting is June 1st. So if you need to continue it at that time, if they're not ready to come forward, but you, you should continue till June 1st and then we'll go from there.
Okay, very good. So I need a roll call vote. Margaret Sweet?
Yes, I vote to continue this until June 1st.
Okay. John Souza?
Yes.
Steve Taylor?
Yes.
Kathleen Del Sordo?
Yes.
Kevin Mello? Yes. Okay, very good.
Kevin, one, Kevin, one more comment. If, if we know this potentially could go to November, can the engineer and applicant look at starting the process for a time extension here?
So I, I forward the, I forward the, um, the form as it gets closer.
Okay.
That's why I said the June 1st deadline. So that gives us a month to get it signed if we need to.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Kathy, for sitting in for me.
You're very welcome. I'm going to exit myself and have a good meeting and say states, safe, please.
You too now.
Yep.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a release of lots from performance covenant, Lincoln Lane Map 8 Lot 1. Christine?
So I had given you a revised report today. My report last, last week in your packet had said about surety release. I misunderstood what the applicant was asking for. So it is a lot release. And I do recommend that you move forward with a lot release at this time. They will look for a surety lease in the future.
I'm sorry, Christine, I have the last sentence that you said.
I said they will be looking for the surety releases in the future. W has confirmed 75% of the work has been completed so far in the, on the roadway. But I am comfortable with the lot release at this time so that they can move forward and record with the registry of deeds. The only thing I would have to say is as part of the form, typically we have you all sign it the night of if you decide to move forward tonight. So I want to know under these current conditions, if I have your approval to sign if you do move forward with this and then have it notarized and then have it notarized in-house tomorrow so that I can get it to the applicant to move forward with the recording under these conditions again.
I'm fine with that.
So the applicant is online if anybody wants to ask any questions as well.
And does the planning board have any questions on this? John?
Nope.
No, anyone else?
No.
Um, do I hear a motion?
I move. Let Christine sign it on our behalf if it all goes forward as she just described.
Second.
Do I have a second on that motion?
You have a second.
Okay, all in favor, Kevin?
Hi.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Loriann, yes. So that was moved by Steve and seconded by Kevin. Am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, Christine may sign, um, sign this for the board. Now we need a motion on the floor to, um, release a lot if that's what the board so desires.
I make that motion to release the lots.
I will second that.
So the first, the first motion is for me to sign if you do approve it and the second motion is for you, is for the actual release?
Yes.
Okay. It is of two lots.
Two lots.
Two lots?
It is lots, yes. Laurel?
Yes, lots.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I have a motion that was made by Margaret and seconded by?
Kevin.
Kevin.
Kevin, to release two lots. All in favor, Kevin?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Loriann, yes, the motion carries unanimously. And Christine, you can sign off on that.
So I will contact you tomorrow with the, uh, to get the paperwork. We'll make arrangements to meet you at the door, okay?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
More taxpayers should be watching what goes on. Good night.
Good night.
Um, the next number four is, uh, the past commands at Office Park. 461 to 479 Fords Corner Road, map 68, lots 33 and 34.
This is a new site plan review, um, application and Margaret will be recusing herself.
So I'm going to step away for, and I'll be back, okay?
Okay. Christine, um, you're on the floor first.
Um, I provided you with the review of the, uh, of the project here. The only questions that I had as part of, um, as part of the, uh, site plan review analysis was the actual, um, I couldn't confirm the dimensions of the, um, of the parking spaces. I believe that they are 10 by 20, but I just wanted to verify that with the engineer. And then, um, I had a question about how the applicant was going to handle the, um, the fire lane. I didn't see, I didn't see anything on the plans with regard to the fire lane. Um, I also should tell you as part of this, I did forward something on behalf of the, um, uh, an article from the New York Times today on, um, drive-throughs and this current crisis that we have. So you did receive an email this afternoon. Um, I don't know if you all had seen your email prior to the, prior to this meeting.
Okay, so, um, the applicant's on?
Yes.
Can he, the size of the, was it the parking spaces?
Madam Chairwoman, Mark Bobrowski for the applicant. I'm with Larry Silva. Uh, Larry will handle the technical questions. Uh, my office is in Concord for the record. Uh, we're here this evening to try to get site plan approval for the Dunkin' Donuts restaurant with a fast food drive-through window. I'll let Larry answer the technical questions and if the board has any questions about the permissibility of this, I'll pick up the pieces later. Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm not drinking any water right now, but I don't have any box from dogs either. Okay. Um, the first question that you asked was about the parking size. If you go to the parking summary table, it actually says in the parking summary table that the spaces are 10 by 20. When it gives, when it gives the parking count, um, that would be on the page. It's on the top, in the top left side of page three of six.
Christine, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and with regard to the turning lane, there is not a specific turning lane, but if you go to, um.
No, fire lane?
I'm sorry, fire lane. Fire lane is on, on Pete's six. It shows the routing of fire trucks through the site itself. The fire lane is actually the actual travel lanes through the site. So the actual driveways are the, um, are the actual fire lanes. So that's why they're not actually striped as such.
Christine, do we have a sign off on this from the fire chief?
Um, the fire chief had looked at the, uh, original plan that had come through, um, the, the, uh, first application. Um, I, and they had looked at, in particular, they had looked at the layout of the, uh, of the fire truck analysis at that time. I don't know if anything substantial has changed, I don't believe so. But I guess Mr. Bobrowski could answer that.
I think Mr. Silva may know what the fire chief has done better than me, so.
Not the, uh, all the, all the comments that, um, were provided, uh, both by the fire chief and by DPW on prior applications, both the first one that we had come forward and then withdrew, which was the original drive-through and then the subsequent one that was approved. Um, all those comments were addressed and the fire lane and the, and the routing of the trucks through the site is consistent with what the fire chief looked at the first time.
Any questions, any, any questions from the planning board? John?
Um, yes, so we are voting, uh, we're being asked to vote on the site plan, uh, this evening for the drive-through, am I correct?
Yes.
So some questions on this new plan, I'm looking at, um, that shows the drive-through. So you've got a configuration here for drive-through and then a second lane for the drive-through and then a mobile pickup lane. And then they all converge, I think, at one point. Can you explain that to me and walk me through that process? And what are the, what it looks like, three concrete pads, the size of a vehicle? I'm assuming those are, um, the auto boards and the actual, uh, drive-in window. But, uh, can someone verify that for me?
Well, I can, I'll talk about it from a site point of view. Bob Munger is here to talk from a Dunkin' Donuts point of view and Peter Van Eerf also. From a site plan point of view, there, there, you're correct, there are three lanes which are related to the drive-through window. Two of them are, have menu boards so that when you approach the, the drive-through, you can choose which lane to go in to place your order. Once your order is placed and accepted, then you can proceed, uh, proceed to the pickup window, which is on the far side of the, uh, of the building. Uh, the other lane is a mobile lane. That's for orders that were called in or, or actually text in or, or called in, um, mobily. And so when you, uh, approach that lane, uh, you can then proceed, uh, to the pickup window in order to, uh, uh, pick up your order. And then outside of that is a bypass lane, which is there for someone who needs to either jump out, go around or, um, if there were deliveries or whatever. But there's another lane on the outside to be able to bypass the activity that's going on within the drive-through area.
John, did you get that?
Um, yeah, so this is the, the, the first, uh, I think we did one for McDonald's that had two, um, two lanes, well, we've got three. And, uh, you know, I've never experienced this myself. I don't have any experience, uh, going to a facility like this. Um, is the corporation concerned about, have they seen any type of, uh, I'll be frank, you know, road rage where you've got three lanes converging into one? Uh, I just ordered, the guy next to me just ordered and we're proceeding to the, uh, to the window and there's, uh, a few cars stacked and now we're all competing to get to that window. And you're converging at one location. Does, do conflicts, uh, evolve there? Not only between drivers, it needs to be a pinch point.
Perhaps I can, I can answer that. Um, I'm an architect who does a lot of, been working for Dunkin' Donuts for many years. They actually have just, in the past few years, Dunkin' has started doing this. And part of the whole system is that each lane has a, basically a traffic light set up on it. It's not a traffic light, it's just a little go wait. So that the first car that orders goes in their turn. Let's say you have three cars waiting at the drive-through at the site menus. So they would go in the order that they pull up to the menu. And then if somebody pulls in at the mobile lane, they'll be directed to go forward in the order that they, basically that they arrive. So then everybody's kind of, the, the computer is sorting that everybody goes in their turn.
So can you explain to me where those, I don't know what you call them, traffic lights are on, on the plan? How was that, I'm a driver, I'm pulling up and I just ordered on my, uh, mobile app.
Oh, the, the, the app will tell you when to go. The app tells you when to go. It, the app, right, so the GPS in your phone, Dunkin' is looking for you. GPS in your phone will read when you've arrived at the site. Not, not exactly where you are in the line, but they will then tell you which, which order to go in.
Yeah.
Allegedly, I haven't personally experienced.
Right, so it just doesn't say, my order is ready for pickup and I can proceed.
Yeah.
But tell me that in lane one and two, they're competing and they're both moving forward. I shouldn't go yet, is that right?
That's what the, the app will tell you that.
I got to go after one and before two. Is it that sophisticated?
Yes, in theory it is. I haven't personally tried it out, but that's what the plan is. It's been being run at a number of stores.
It's a sequencing, uh, alert. It's basically giving one green and two red and then alternating as to, uh, which one is to proceed forward.
Yeah.
So maybe Bob Munger can say a couple of words about the, the trend within the industry because he's, he's probably the most in tune in that respect. I saw, he's muted, I see.
Bob, you have to unmute yourself.
Maybe Peter. Have to unmute.
Oh, there, there he comes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Uh, yeah, so this is, um, this is fairly new. Uh, last couple of years, we've had these, um.
Introduce yourself, you're the, you're.
I'm sorry, yes, Robert Munger from Dunkin' Donuts. I'm here with Michael Loops, also from Dunkin' Donuts. And, uh, and the others who have spoken. Um, so we have, we have this, this model to alleviate, um, the drive-throughs. We talked about stacking early on, we talked about the two drive-through boards. Mobile, mobile ordering is, um, is an increasing part of our business where people can order ahead of time from their phone and, and they can come to the location with, via either drive-through or inside and pick up their orders. And, and as Peter stated, um, it does give you an indication as to when you arrive. And, and people just kind of merge into that sequence when they come into the, um, lanes and alternate towards the window. And when you get to the window, they have your order ready for you, it's been paid for and you're off on your way. Fairly simple.
Okay, thank you.
I want to ask, can I ask a follow-up to that? I didn't normally, but just so I'm clear, the, um, the ZBA decision that was granted, was this part of their, um, the application that they had seen at that time? I think that's important.
Yeah, I think our driving plans were the same, Larry.
Yes, they were. There were three lanes, same, same configuration. I mean, there's a slightly maybe different technical configuration, but nothing significant. I mean, it's the same concept. It was, uh, basically the layout was the same. And, and, and I should point out though, that the other features that are in here are the same as what, uh, was in the approved site plan that, that the board has seen, that we do have the, uh, the bike racks for those, uh, folks that are coming in that way. We have, uh, pedestrian connections with sidewalks from Fords Corner, from the adjoining, uh, lots within the, um, development. Uh, so this is really giving a lot of options in terms of, uh, uh, finding your way to Dunkin'.
Yes, I've, I've seen that, um, and it looks good. Uh, one question, I got a question, Larry, for Christine. So the, um, applicant received a variance for a drive-through at the site and a drive-through is not allowed in this, uh, in this area. They received a variance, um, that's noted on your comments to the board and they also received a variance on a setback from the building of one feet. But they did not receive variances on, uh, design standards. The planning board has design standards for drive-through. And, um, the, uh, the menu board and the drive, the pickup window has to be a certain, uh, distance and allow for so many, um, stacking cars. And then also from the menu board back to, uh, a conflict in the parking lot, they have to provide, uh, so many stacking, uh, spaces. Have you looked and verified that they meet, uh, design standards?
So that was part of the original applications that have come through numerous other times. Again, because the, the, uh, this was just a new application with, with this, um, with this variance for the, the thing, I did not go back through those numbers, but those things had not changed. But we did look at the menu boards to start with, we did review all of that. And I'm, I have not been, um, informed of any changes in any of those areas by the applicant.
Um, so did the applicant provide you those numbers of how many are stacked up and those distances and?
In previous reviews, yes, they have.
So I don't recall, um, at least from the, uh, planning board's perspective, because this is the first, I believe, we've seen a drive-through. Uh, maybe through your reviewers process, you've seen it. But the planning board has not seen a, a, a drive-through because, uh, they hadn't received the variance for that and they received site plan review for a standalone restaurant. Am I correct in that, uh, board members and, uh, Mr. Bobrowski?
The applicant has received a special permit for a conventional office industrial district restaurant. That is a restaurant that complies with Section D. Specifically, 90% of the design capacity is for sit-down and 60% of the customers will be originating within the district. That, that's what the OID allows by special permit. You have granted us that special permit. You've also approved that, uh, that, that special permit, site plan review for that use. We have not recorded that document at the registry of deeds. We've obviously not commenced that use or begun construction. This is a new application for a drive-through site plan review approval. So it's, it's a different, in my opinion, it's a different kind of restaurant. And your bylaw pretty much says the same thing. Your bylaw differentiates, I call your attention to the parking table between a sit-down restaurant and a fast food takeout drive-through restaurant. There are two separate uses, two separate parking standards. This is an application to approve the second type of restaurant, the one that is not otherwise allowed in the, uh, office industrial district. But as has been mentioned a couple of times already, we have a use variance from the ZBA that allows us to proceed. I would also call your attention in the ZBA decision, the finding by the ZBA that the proposed project will comply with all setbacks, building height, lot coverage and parking requirements as required in the OID. So that was a finding specifically.
So I understood, and so I'm just trying to, I think this is the first time that the planning board has seen a drive-through for this facility. We all understand you'd be granted a variance, I don't have a problem with that. You've followed the, the procedures. I just want to make sure that as, as Mr. Babrowski just stated, that the Board of Appeals granted a variance for a drive-through, subject to them meeting all the design standards for a drive-through. Based on the comments I've seen from my town planner, I don't see any check-offs that that process has been followed, and I don't have a problem conditionally approving that this evening based on Christine following through and verifying that there's a proper distance between the window and the menu board, and that there's proper stacking from the menu board back, and it does meet all of the guidelines per our standards and per the variance. Does the engineer feel comfortable that he's, he's, he saw those and he's met those?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, and I haven't got a problem with a, a condition that says that we will, we can, we can supplement it or demonstrate it.
Those are the requirements that have been met.
So I can, I can work with the applicant on that, if, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, I just want to verify that.
I mean...
I was glancing at the ZBA decision, and it doesn't specifically reference that. It just says otherwise complies with the zoning bylaw. So Mr. Silva's offer is, is, is the correct one.
Well, those are the only comments I have.
Okay, any other questions from other members of the board? Any other comments from Christine?
I'll make a motion, we conditionally approve the site plan review, subject to further review and verification from the town planner that the, the drive, all the drives-through standards have been met. And if they have not, that no approval be given at the, and the site plan come back before the planning board.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the, John Susan making a motion to approve conditionally with the approval of our town planner. Kevin has seconded it. All in favor, Kevin?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Loriann, yes. The vote is unanimous, four with one. Chris.
Thank you very much, members.
Thank you.
To make sure we can work out all of the, the numbers. Everything is acceptable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have Margaret back on yet? Margaret? We can go ahead and approve these, go through the minutes of these meetings, because Margaret was not a member of the board then. So...
So you're going to amend the, you're going to amend the agenda?
Yeah.
Out of order, okay.
The agenda or the...
I just want to take things out of, out of order.
What was next?
Next was, uh, next is correspondence.
Oh, I'm sorry, correspondence.
That's okay.
Yeah, you're right. I need a motion on the board to acknowledge and file correspondence.
So I'll move, second.
John Susan moved, Kevin Mello seconded a motion to acknowledge and file correspondence, look, correspondence, all in favor, Kevin?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Loriann, yes. Margaret back on yet? Okay, so that will be four to zero, four, um, four, all in favor. And a zero. Okay, next on the agenda, the minutes of the, minutes of the regular meeting of August 20th, 2018.
So the thing with this is Kevin was not at this first meeting, so I'm going to kind of go through each one. I couldn't find how many members, because we're, two of the members are no longer on the board. How best to handle this particular situation? So I, I, I don't think that members who were not part of it or who were not present should be responding. So I, in this first one, it would be John and Lori that would vote on this particular one. I know...
Motion to approve as written.
Second. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Loriann, yes. Okay, let me scroll down here. I need, okay, the next one is...
Is for that same date, and it's a, I'm sorry, it's the, the zoning articles. So again, it's going to be just the two of you on this first one.
Motion to approve as written.
Seconded, and John, yes. And Loriann, yes. Motion, motion carries. Okay, that's for the fall town meeting. The third one is...
Meeting minutes from September 10th, and this would be John, Kevin, and Lori.
Motion to approve the enclave at the reserve meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Reservoir.
Okay, all in favor, John?
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Yes.
Loriann, yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve the scenic road tree removal, public hearing minutes of September 10th.
No, wait a, no, wait a minute. September, the enclave on the reservoir?
No, we just did that one.
You did the meeting minutes first, and then she has public hearing minutes?
Yeah, I just, the enclave at the reservoir.
Yeah.
You did that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So now on, motion is to approve the scenic road, road tree removal, Lucy Little Road of September 10th, 2018.
So the only thing I would say on this one is we need, just to amend, fix the page at the bottom, so it says one of one.
Okay. John, you're moving that with the...
Motion seconded.
Second.
All in favor, John?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Loriann, yes. Okay, that one's done.
Next one is meeting of September 10th, 2018, 15 Highland Avenue, O S R subdivision. Make a motion to approve those as written.
Second.
All in favor, Kevin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Loriann, yes. Motion carries.
Regular meeting minutes of September 24th, 2018. I make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Okay, John moved, Kevin seconded, all in favor, John?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Loriann, yes. Motion carries unanimously.
So you forgot one, you didn't do the, the public hearing minutes for September 10th. That's the zoning articles on that particular day.
Okay.
To, do we have that one?
Yep, we do. We have article C, article B.
That was the last thing in the list on the agenda.
Yes. What is that, 11, 14? No.
So that, that again needs a page, thing on the bottom, so five of five, or whatever.
Of eight?
This is a five, this is a set of five pages? Public hearing minutes entitled Fall Town Meeting, A Zoning Article, September 10th, 2018.
What page is that stat on?
It's one of five.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, so we need an article to approve the minutes of this meeting?
I'm, I'm not seeing that one in my packet. I have one from minutes of August 20th, 2018, Fall Town Meeting articles.
Right, but there should have been another one for, for September, the September 18th. Which is, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, I just didn't receive it in my, in my packet here.
Okay, so do we need to bring that one forward to the next meeting? She can't vote, you don't have.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I'll bring this one forward.
Right, okay. Yeah, it's not in my, it's not in my packet here.
Is that the last one?
Yes, so that one, well, because you already did the September 24th one.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is... If you get through these minutes here. Okay, next on the, is that, is, is Margaret back in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Lori.
Okay, great. Next on the agenda is the...
Chair's report.
Oh, chair's report. I cannot take any questions on what I am about to say. There was a personnel problem in the town hall, which escalated to bringing it to HR. HR is handling the personnel problem. And if, if it's, and it looks like it's being handled, probably HR will take care of it, and she's very good. I was really amazed, she was excellent. And at this point, she's handling it. If it cannot be handled, then we will, in the future, need to go into executive, executive meeting to discuss this. But at this point, HR is handling it where it belongs, and that's about what I can say on this. But I just felt the board needed to know that I was asked to attend a meeting for this problem in the town hall. And that's all I can really say. I just put you on notice that this took place. Okay, I, that's all I have.
Okay, so for the planner's report, I do have the master plan thing, but I'm just going to give you a couple of quick updates first. I did receive an email today from SERPED regarding the floodplain mapping. They're still trying to work with FEMA in case our town meeting date changes. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that they are working on it, and we did sign up with, with them to move forward if they move forward. The second thing I was going to just tell you was the Fonce Corner Executive Center shorty issue was, was handled, and everybody is happy, and money is being released as we speak, if it hasn't been already. The next thing I had was that I have scheduled the, the meeting with DPW, so for that's for next Monday night, the 18th. We do have the select board meeting room, the chambers, available, and we do have, it looks like right now, eight people. I, I know that DCTV asked me to confirm today. I haven't gotten an answer on whether or not the three DEP, DPW board members will be present or not. But we do have, as far as I know, three staff members coming, and then us. I have also signed up for a Zoom, a Zoom meeting and password. So anybody who is not comfortable socially distancing within that room, which we are making arrangements to do, you can let me know, and you can sign in, or if the public wants to look in. I did give you a tentative list of what I had given to Dave Hickox, so you can all look at that, and you can, I sent that in an email the other day. You can give me any other things. I will formalize an agenda for that meeting as, as we get closer. I do have one other correspondence from Dave Hickox that I will also forward to all of you prior to that. The next thing I had was that SERPED did read, they did submit...
Christine?
Yeah.
Before you go on to SERPED, with respect to the upcoming meeting with DPW?
Yep.
Did you get my email wanting to ask them to give us a brief update on the progress on the Peyton Airmen Bridge as part of that meeting, so we could hear about that?
Oh, I did not see that, to be honest with you.
Well, could, I did send you an email about that, and you can read it at your convenience, but I simply would like to ask that on the, on the agenda, anywhere DPW wants to put it, I would like to hear either DPW or the town planner or both, tell us exactly what's going on for the future planning of the Peyton Airmen Bridge with two specific points. One having to do with the repair of the current bridge to make sure it's going to service in the short run, and the other one having to do with what is the plan for the long-range replacement of the bridge. I know there's work going on on that, but I don't know where we stand. I'd like to get an update.
Okay, I can do that.
Just those two things, I think would be good for us, but more important, it's good for the public and all of our constituents who live in the southern part of town to hear what it is they're doing or not doing about that, so that we don't be surprised like we were the last time on the causeway.
Like, anybody else has anything else, you can let me know in the coming days. The next thing I had was for SERPED, they have changed their billing policy going forward. So their, their invoicing for the master plan goes directly to the town administrator, and then he asked me to review it and give him a recommendation. So that is something that has changed as a result of the current conditions. So they did submit an invoice. It was for $3,895.77, and it was for work already completed, and they went through. It was for the third workshop. It was for the planning initially of the fourth workshop that was supposed to have happened over this time period. And it was the, the draft plan that we're going to talk about now and the layout plan. So I did recommend to Sean that it be approved. So now the last thing I have here is I did forward to all of you the initial draft chapter from Helen at SERPED. She is also working, by the way, on the, on the FEMA, the FEMA component for town meetings. So she's kind of doing double duty at this point. What I would tell you all, I guess, the, probably the easiest way to do it, I mean, we can discuss it generally tonight if anybody has any comments, but if over the next few days, if you want to give me a red line of it or anything like that, that would probably be best. That way, I can incorporate everybody's changes altogether, unless there's a real policy thing that needs to be discussed. This is how we'll be receiving multiple chapters going forward. The other piece was she had given me a link to a, to a formatting process that she has set up for the, for the, for the master plan pages. So we are going to, she's working with Mike O'Reilly for some of the GIS information, her and the staff. We're going to, I, I haven't advised them to move forward with 11x17s for any mapping that they're going to do for you, just based on the, the size of the town and the shape. It doesn't, it just doesn't bode well for eight and a half by 11. So there will be pull-out maps throughout the document unless somebody has a major problem with that. So she did give formatting, she gave a cover page, that type of thing. So... I don't know if anybody wants to give me feedback at this time, or on the chapter that you have so far?
I have some feedback.
Okay.
And I would be happy to get, dive in to do redlining if you want. If I'm not mistaken, and forgive the, the baseball analogy, but I think we're about in the fourth or fifth inning of the report, maybe the sixth inning?
Well...
And there's more to come?
Right, yes.
Is that right?
Yes, yes.
So I understand that there's more to come, and I'm obviously not commenting on anything that isn't done yet.
Yes.
But I have paid very close attention to every one of the workshops, and have been at everyone, and so forth. And I thought they did a really nice job writing down the sort of historical facts and the demographic realities about Dartmouth in the very beginning of what they wrote. I thought it was very well done and accurate and no issues. At the time, at the moment, they went into the transition from, these are the facts about what Dartmouth is today and what it was in the last number of years, to where we want to go in the future. They had a line that I, that made me almost jump out of my chair, that I disagree with vigorously, that quote, "Most people who attended the workshops," end quote, "were in favor of continued growth as long as it was smart growth," or whatever, end quote. And I don't remember anybody ever saying anything of the sort. They then went on to several other things where they talked about how we didn't want suburban sprawl, we did want to protect farms. There were a whole bunch of other things that were exactly right. In fact, there was vigorous dis- conversation on all the other things. So without being critical, what I think... So without being critical, what I think way have happened is that somebody just wrote sort of, and you should read it carefully yourself and see what you all think about it. But I think they wrote sort of a throwaway line that Dartmouth has been growing for years and most townspeople think we should keep growing, but they want to grow this way, that way, and the other way that is smarter. I'm not at all sure that anybody ever said that we ought to keep growing, and I certainly want to challenge the notion that we should keep growing, I think if we stop growing, the town would be a lot healthier. And I think the planning board in a long-range planning perspective, whether we do it during the time of the SERPAD work, or whether we do it after they submit a draft and then we rewrite the draft to say what we really want as a planning board, I think we need to put at least an hour on our agenda to talk vigorously and seriously about whether a future population growth is a good idea or a bad idea for the town of Dartmouth. But I thought it was.
Steve, I'm going to butt in. It is not what the planning board wants. This is a growth management plan of the town and what the town peoples want.
Correct.
I can tell you, so, and we are to listen to the townspeople, that is their job. And I can tell you with that, one of the meetings I attended, that is exactly what they talked about, smart growth. And smart growth means you have a balance of all different types of growth. And they did talk about that. And again, it's, we are to listen to the townspeople, I mean, John, you've been through this with me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a growth management master plan of citizens of this town.
To a certain degree, Laurie. Yes, I've been through this a couple of times. The master plan is developed by the planning board with input from our citizens. Now, understand that the town is made up today of over 34,000 people. How many people are showing up at these workshops? Forty? Fifty? They do not speak for the entire town. So the planning board, regardless, depending on what comes out of these workshops, the planning board ultimately decides what goes in the master plan. So in the end, the planning board could disagree with statements that were made by 40 citizens and change it to something different. We are the elected officials for the, for the town and for this process. So I think it's very important to get public input and get input from our citizens, but ultimately it's the planning board's document, not the 40 citizens, who many of them may be, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything at this time, but could be of special interest. They don't represent the entire town. We do. Five members that were elected to the board.
That's a good point, thank you.
And I, I'm not trying to be contentious, I do remember hearing all of the above that you both just said. What I really want and I'm begging for is that we, the planning board, create a serious amount of time on our agenda, I would say one hour at the first meeting would be a good way to start, and then we can decide whether we need a second hour or half hour at some future meetings. But I really think we need to talk about the big picture stuff before we start worrying about footnote three of item 2B. I really think we need to talk about the big picture stuff, and I don't care whether we do it after SERPAD's work is all done, and we have seen the whole nine innings of their work, but I agree with John, it is our document. And I want to spend the time on doing it right before any deadlines. We can do it along the way, or we can do it at the end, but I'm really urging that we sit down and seriously set aside the time to do it and do it well, because it is our document and it is what we elected, we're elected for, and frankly, it's the only reason I ran to be on the board, is to start to work on what's better, and just one last point. The issue that we discussed or began to discuss in our joint discussion with the Finance Committee, which is that so many people in town don't understand the fiscal reality of what subdivisions do to us or don't do to us, we really need to sort that out first, because that will guide a lot of how people actually think about a future master plan, it's one thing if we're making money, and it's another thing if we're losing money on every decision that we rubber stamp. And we need to sort out the facts before we write the final 10-year master plan.
So I think what I had envisioned for all of you to do is if you give me your comments on, on the particular chapter, and then I bring all of the comments together at the next meeting. So this was just to, to get it out to all of you. I think we should go through it step by step, I don't think we should wait until the end and then go through the whole document, I would rather go through piecemeal like, like Steve is saying, you know, piece by piece. There is definitely some, what you would call canned language in here, there, there, you know, there are some terms that just don't really apply. On the, the last page in particular is some of the things that Steve is referring to. You know, we don't use all of that terminology necessarily. So there, there are some revisions that definitely need to be made. So I would suggest that you, you know, if you all give me your, your red lines, I can put them all together and then see where we stand, and then I'll present you the chapter. You know, I, I've done my own thing, but again, this is, you know, me looking at, at the town. This is your town, so it, you know, you might have a different vision for your town than I have for your town. And, you know, I mean, I ultimately need to do what you desire, that, that's my goal here, so I think if you give me some comments on it, then I can give you the, I can give it all to you and I can, you know, we can work from there, we have something to work from, it's right, you know, it's hard to go through it right now just on the fly if everybody isn't, you know, up to speed on all of the pages of it.
Yeah.
All I'm asking for is time on the agenda, so I, I like your approach, I think your approach is a great one, but I think just, we really need to block out some time on the agenda to talk about it, the five of us face to face. We can agree, we can disagree, we can argue, but we need the time to do all of the above.
So if you get, get me your sections, I can put it on the, on the June 1 agenda, I think the June 1 agenda should be somewhat light, and I'm thinking we're not going to have the meeting on the 2nd for the town meeting, so it shouldn't be too bad. So it might be a good opportunity to go over your feedback on this first section.
Right, and I think this is something that would be good if we're, we're meeting in person too, and I think from the way everything sounds, the governor will be lis, will be lifting the, people will be back to work on the 18th, so. Hopefully, everything will be back, or some will be back. So I, I think we need to do this in person and not, it, it's just easier, I think. And I may be wrong, but how does the rest of you feel?
I don't have a problem with that, Laurie, I just, a question for Christine on the process. So the, the next draft we receive are going to have comments, if you received any, in red.
So I'll, yes, I'll give you comments, so that you can look at what each other's comments are. Depending on how many comments I get, if, if not, maybe I'll give it to you in sections each person and we can.
Sure. Could you, what we do receive, would you mind numbering the pages? So when we do get to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Even if it's just penciled for now.
Yeah.
Just overall, I got a comment on page three or eight, whatever it may be, makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can Laura, can I go back to Loriann's prior question? I don't want to be overly conservative, if the Select Board room is really big and we have lots of space, I'm willing to be, meet in person, we can wear our masks and so forth, but to be perfectly honest, I think the idea of gathering in person, especially if there's more than 10 people in the room, is a bad idea, and on the other hand, I personally think that these e-meetings, these virtual meetings are going just perfectly, I don't, I haven't seen any problems, we, we got off to maybe a tiny bumpy start, but mostly even our first one was good. I just think these meetings are a lot safer than going back to town hall anytime soon, and I would be very interested to know what each of the other ones of you think, because maybe I'm just being too conservative, but I'd love to know what everybody thinks.
Well, I can tell you, I work, I'm working, I'm out there in the public working, so I don't feel uncomfortable. If I'm out in the public working, I should not be uncomfortable working, being in a room where we're, we're six feet apart.
Well, I feel it depends on how many people are coming, Laurie.
Yeah, oh, no, I agree.
So I mean, if you've got eight other, the finance or other people coming, and we have 15 or 20 people in the room, I am not comfortable. I would rather just have a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, and I'd like to reserve my opinion when we get closer to that date. You know, every day, the news is changing. The state and federal requirements are changing, so I like to see what the state is going to do as far as reopening and what's going to be allowed and not allowed, and how it's going to be allowed, whether it's going to be limited to 10 people or more, before I make any, voice any opinion of what I like to do for those meetings.
Kevin, how do you feel?
I'm out there working, so I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm fine, I'm comfortable with the Zoom meetings, I'm good with that, so. Whichever way, if the governor says 10 people max, I say we follow what the government, what Governor Baker's saying. If he moves it to 15 people, we can meet in person.
So the only thing I would tell you is we might have to work opposite the Select Board, you know, if we want to meet in their room, we might have to work opposite, you know, their schedule or whatever, so we might have to amend our, our planning board meetings a little bit, you know, for Monday nights, if we want to keep on Monday nights. The other thing is there is a bigger conference, there is a conference room there next door as well, that might, would work if it was just the planning board members. For the DPW meeting, I do have both, both options available, like, that's another option I can do going forward.
Christine, can I just ask you, what's, what is the problem with just asking everybody to do the Zoom meeting when we meet, for example, with the DPW? Is there anything wrong with these meetings that's bothering anybody?
DPW did not want to meet that way, we gave them the op, the option, which way they wanted to go, and Dave Hickox had, had requested that it be an in-person thing, so that's why.
They don't have their computers set up?
He wants to be onsite. And that was what, what Laurie had thought as well. Do, no, I didn't ask him, it doesn't matter to me, to be honest with you.
Stephen.
We just need to have this.
Stephen, let me comment.
So you can call.
No, I know, and, and that was going to be my next question. If some of us would rather meet virtually, and Dave can meet in the room if he wants, we can keep the population of the room down if we meet virtually, but is the room set up so that everybody can, everything's going to work beautifully? Is Dartmouth TV able to make it all work beautifully if some of us go virtual and some don't?
Yes, they've done that with, you did that in a meeting when you had with the Select Board, actually, I don't know, maybe a month or so ago, we had a joint meeting, they were in, they were in that room and you were all on Zoom on the screen in the background, so.
And it all, and it worked fine, and it can work fine again?
Yes, it worked fabulously.
Well, then that.
They were even doing a YouTube thing at the same time we were doing a Zoom thing, so.
So maybe that, maybe that solves the problem, and we can all be happy either way, but I'm happy either way, but I want to be, I agree that if Governor Baker is sure, I'll probably be willing to come in person too, but I'm not going to take a chance on the borderline, and I think a lot of other states in this country are shooting themselves in both feet right now, and we need to be really careful.
John?
Yeah, just some comments to Steve, because I think, he asked a question, if people have a problem with the Zoom meetings. I, I agree with your statement, Steve, that the Zoom meetings have been working fine, but my preference is to meet in person. I think Zoom has worked great for this, for this period in time that we're in. But going forward, if the governor says it's okay, and we're comfortable with it, my preference is to meet in person, again, now things could change, news could be much different in a few days from now, but ultimately, I'm interested in getting back to normal. I'm interested in getting a room with all you folks and engineers and abuddies who come before us, because I base my decision, and we all do as, as humans, not just on voices and looking at somebody's headshot, but body language. And a lot of these Zoom meetings, all I'm seeing is six to seven, you're at the screen at the same time, you have to scroll to see somebody else. A lot of people don't have video at all, all we're doing is doing, hearing voices, and I'm missing that communication, body language is huge when we, as a governing board, are making some tough decisions at times. So I'm interested in getting, getting back to conducted meetings in public, with everybody in a room as soon as possible and this, and safely.
Yeah, I am too, I just want to emphasize safely, yeah.
I agree. Yep.
So you want to give me comments with, like, within a week or so on the, on the SERPAD chapter, if anybody wants to, or just says if you're not going to, then just tell me that, send me an email or whatever, that way there. I don't care if they're handwritten notes or if they're just, you know, as long as I get something. And then just so you all know that the, the office is staffed in some capacity every day, part-time. Typically, like, nine to one, 10 to two, that type of thing. So there is somebody always available if you need to come and get something, or if you need to have something signed, or we can make arrangements, the building is not open still at this point, I'm assuming based on Governor Baker's press conference today, that maybe I'll get some new direction from Sean and the Select Board tomorrow or the next day, once they've had a chance to review all of the, the guidance that have been moved forward.
I'll send you something this week, Christine.
Okay. Anything else? I see one other person on here, I'm not sure if they have something that they want to discuss, or if they're from DCTV. Christopher Shay, does anybody know who that is, or?
Remember, the public could be a reporter, who knows?
Are you muted, would you like to talk?
East with Dartmouth Week.
Yeah, so he's a reporter.
Yep, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure we were.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kevin, aye?
Yeah.
John, Stephen?
Yes.
Motion carries, the meeting has, is now adjourned.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Bye.